Good evening. Welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. At the moment, I'm Mary Perkins-Williams, Chairwoman. I'm delighted to be ending my term tonight. So I'm so happy to have all of you to be here to witness this. We elect the Chair once every year in December. And this is my maiden boy. Do I look happy? And this goes for you out in the world of Pitt County government. It has been a pleasure, colleagues. I've enjoyed every minute, and I can hardly wait to get up and switch seats. So let's come to order, and we'll take roll call, Madam Clerk. Everyone is present.
Yes, Madam Chair. As a reminder to the Board, in the interest of preserving public confidence in the actions of this Board, do any Board members have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the Board today? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the particular matter involved.
Are there anyone that fits that in conflict of interest on this dais? There being none, no one has responded. Thank you. We will now have invocation by Commissioner Mark Smith.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for your love and mercy and grace. Lord, we just ask you to be with us as we make decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens. And, Lord, we give you the praise and glory for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have a pledge allegiance guest tonight, and her name is Jade Hamm, Pitt County Schools. And she is a community, early college community school. Please tell us who you are, and I'll say a word or two.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jade Hamm. I'm currently in 11th grade at Pitt County Schools Early College High School. And I am currently the student body president for our Student Government Association. And I'm interested in going into engineering whenever I graduate. Thank you for having me at this meeting. At this time, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Madam Manager.
Yes, at your places in front of you is a revised agenda item recommending that you appoint Matt Gibson to serve as interim county attorney out of Grade 82, Step 29, effective this evening.
Second.
Let's vote, please. It's your Madam Clerk. We will now have nominations for Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For clarity and uniformity, I will begin by reading your rules of procedure.
Thank you.
As the second order of business, the Chair shall turn over the meeting to the county attorney, who shall preside over the Board for the election of officers for the following year. The Board shall elect a Chair and Vice Chair from among its members, who shall then immediately assume those positions for the ensuing year. Any Commissioner may nominate any other Commissioner for Chair, or may nominate the current Chair or Vice Chair for a second term. Nominations do not require a second. It is not necessary to open or close nominations by motion. Once all Commissioners have had an opportunity to make a nomination, the Board shall vote, with the last nominee being voted on first and continuing in reverse order. A supermajority of the entire Board is necessary to elect the current Chair or Vice Chair for a second term; otherwise, a simple majority is required. And with that, I'll now open nominations for Chair of the Board of County Commissioners.
We will have a nomination for the Chair of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to nominate Chris Nunley.
Commissioner Nunley is nominated. Are there any other further nominations?
Nominate Mark Smith.
Commissioner Smith is nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. The Board shall now vote, again with the last nominee being voted on first. So all those in favor of Commissioner Smith, please vote now.
Yes or no for Smith? You have to vote.
No. Okay.
Moving next. I'm sorry.
Mark Smith won. I mean, I'm sorry. Let's see the do-hickey. Tom Colson. Mark Smith has the majority.
Okay. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith. Now we have the nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominations are now in order for Vice Chair of the Board of County Commissioners.
Nomination for Vice Chair, please.
I'd like to nominate Chris Nunley, please.
Chris Nunley has been nominated.
Are there any further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Anne Poit Huggins.
Commissioner Huggins is nominated. Are there any further nominations? Okay. Hearing none, nominations are closed. The Board shall now vote, again with the last nominee being voted on first. All in favor of Commissioner Huggins, please vote now.
Is your clicker working? Try it again, Commissioner.
I don't know what I'm doing. It's not gonna be mine.
So one is yes, for your vote to be for Commissioner Huggins for Vice Chair?
Right, but I nominated someone else.
Yeah.
The motion for Commissioner Huggins failed.
Yes, ma'am. I'm waiting for Madam Clerk.
You got it, Ms. Clerk?
Moving next to Commissioner Nunley. Again, we would need a supermajority for Commissioner Nunley. And so the Board will now vote, all in favor of Commissioner Nunley, for Vice Chair. And that passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Nunley. Now, year before to the Chair for a break and adjustment of seating arrangements.
We will now have a break while we change and switch.
...maximum unity with the surrounding environment and community. We believe we have gone above and beyond the application requirements for Grifton Solar. I kindly ask the board to take in all information into consideration and make the decision they believe is right for their community. The entire Cypress Creek team is here to answer any additional questions that the board may have. We welcome any additional concerns, questions after public comment, and anticipate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Askew.
Tom Terrell.
Good evening. My name is Tom Terrell. I'm an attorney for Grifton Solar. I was the chairman of the drafting committee for what North Carolina calls Chapter 160D that governs land use in North Carolina. I wrote the foreword to the book on 160D that is published by the UNC School of Government, and only say this to say I have great familiarity with the rules governing zoning land use hearings. With that background, I say with confidence that the vote and decision that was done on November 20th needs seriously to be done because there were procedural errors. All zoning public hearings allow a zoning applicant to speak first. That has been my experience in almost 40 years and in three states. It is the only time, and I saw this through the video, I have never seen it, where opponents were allowed to speak before the applicant is allowed to make their case. In fact, the applicant in this case was only allowed to speak three minutes as a member of the public instead of as the applicant, confusing the rules for public comment with the rules for zoning public hearing. There's also nothing in your adopted rules, I have a copy here, that limits an applicant to only one speaker, as they were told right before the public hearing was something that they had to do. There was no vote on the consistency statement with the land use plan as required by statute, and there was no vote that actually resulted in board action. It may have seemed like it was, but there was not. So procedurally, the board does have to take a new vote. That can't be done tonight either just by a motion to correct, it could be a motion for reconsideration, and there also has to be a vote on its consistency statement. So we hope that you will actually take that vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell.
Chris Jarvis.
Chris Jarvis. I live at 1436 Rock Road in Grifton, and I do have land that is proposed in the solar farm. I do want a solar farm, not only because of that. My family sold generations' old farmland to the last to the other solar farm that connects on Brown Druckers Road. I've not heard a complaint, not one from anyone along that stretch of road. So, you know, it's just, don't judge a book by its cover. Until you see it and look at the depth and get to know that person as a neighbor, we shouldn't judge them. That system, I'm a secretary treasurer for Johnson Milltail Drainage Company, that's 41 miles of drainage. We went from tax revenue of about $1,200 to about $4,500 because of solar farm, and they are great stewards of keeping our system mowed so we don't have to spend additional money to go in and mow the ditches. They just are great neighbors. So, you know, when you look at it, it's beyond the tax revenue for the county, it's tax revenue for us to keep that ditch flowing also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis.
Mary Bryley.
Thank you for this chance to speak to you. That was my brother there, I'm Mary Jarvis Bryley, and I also own some land in this particular area. I just want to tell you a little bit about my family history. We have been giving to Pitt County community all of our lives. We have done it through farming, we have done it through education. After I left the farming and went to East Carolina, I started with Pitt County Schools. I've given, you know, to the community through that. And then went into a hair salon business and have given back to the community and trained people, and all these people who get trained, they've come out and they have helped to build up the community. And now we have a little hair school, and again, we are, you know, the family focus is serving the community. And so for me, to be able to take this little landlocked piece of property that I have in this area, and to be able to give to the community in a different way, a way that is given to us only by God, which is the sunshine, we can give energy, clean energy, back to the community. I know I had spent some time, a long time ago, when I was in Israel, and it was the neatest thing, you would, they would go, they didn't have hot water, and they would just go and they would turn a little button, and there would be these barrels on top of their homes, and for 30 minutes, it would be solar powered. And I thought back in the 80s, I thought, well, that is the neatest little thing, that they've got these little barrels. And now that all this scientific technology has been developed, you know, all these many years later, where we can have solar farms that really tap into that energy that the sun gives us, it is amazing, it is a miracle, and so I am in favor of this. It's just another way of my family being able to continue to serve Pitt County, which we have done all of our lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bryley.
Forgive me if I say this, is it George who signed up 247 Edwards Bridge Road?
My name is George Wayley, and I've been on some solar farms, fighting about it, one on 17, and they clean, and they don't cause any harm to the private, and I'm fall for them. And in the future, I think we'll all be using solar panels for current. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wayley.
Jeff Monaco.
My name is Jeff Monaco. I've been a longtime resident of Pitt County. I'm a retired licensed engineer, professional engineer, and I'm also the chair of Sierra Club Cypress Group, a local representative for the Sierra Club in northeastern North Carolina. I'm here to speak in favor of the solar farm, and there are several other members of our Sierra Club here, sitting with me this evening, so we all support the solar farm.
Can you tell us how many people are here? Do they mind standing? Thank you.
The reason I'm speaking in favor of the solar farm is I worry about how climate change may possibly negatively affect Pitt County by the year 2050. A child today will be in the prime of their careers, their families and their health then in 2050. The decisions we make today, we the older people, like the ones on the solar farm in Grifton, will either protect Pitt County kids or make it worse. Climate change is real. Almost everyone in the world is worrying about it. One thing driving climate change is the very large amount of CO2 pouring into the atmosphere caused by burning the ancient coal and oil to generate electricity. And this causes the CO2 almost pound for pound. Every pound of coal you burn generates about a pound of CO2 and water that goes into the atmosphere. Things don't disappear, they just continue. Once the CO2 is in the atmosphere, it acts like insulation, just as the attic, or excuse me, the insulation in the attic of your home, it holds in heat. And holding in this heat causes climate change, it causes droughts, it melts glaciers, melts polar ice caps, and it causes sea level rise. Just this weekend, I was on Emerald Isle, and you can see the ghost forests on Emerald Isle already from an inch or so of sea level rise, which is changing the environment and salt marshes in Emerald Isle and killing the trees. So this is real, this is changing. So one of my personal goals as an environmentalist is to help people understand our natural world. I also want to help people understand that there is no miracle cure available to reverse climate change. There's lots of little things, but there's no big silver bullet out there. The solution then is to make a lot of small, local decisions that each year, starting now, reduce the amount of carbon going into the air. If the future is not considered in decisions, kids today will have a significant likelihood that as adults, they may face an existential threat that is a life and death threat due to climate change. Solar farms significantly reduce the carbon put into the atmosphere when generating electricity. A Grifton farm that's approved will reduce CO2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monaco.
Nicole Miller.
My name's Nicole Miller. I'm also at Cypress Creek Renewables. Thank you for having us back tonight. It's a pleasure to get to talk to you all again. I wanted to go ahead and address, pardon me, a few things that have come up so far tonight. So regarding the economic impact of this site, this is a site that could provide actually up to four and a half million dollars in tax revenue to the county over the lifespan of the project. Additionally, this site is bringing in jobs. So with construction, that's about 100 to 150 construction jobs. That doesn't account for long-term economic impacts around the site. We've seen neighbors and entrepreneurs come up with ideas like starting their own landscaping companies because they know that we need help, or could ultimately contract with people to actually keep this rolling. We've also seen neighbors start their own food trucks to sell to construction workers during the building so that they're seeing that economic impact. This isn't a one-time economic impact, this is something that goes on through the county. I'd like to also address Ms. May, start talking about ag land. This is something that we've seen over the last decade as an emerging issue. So all the ag land that has been redeveloped or rezoned, lost in the last 10 years in North Carolina, less than 1% of that is from solar farms. So if you think about all the solar farms that you've seen when you're driving out, all the ones that are already in Pitt County, that's less than 1% that has taken farmland out of agriculture. The majority of development that's taking things out of ag land is actually housing. And so those are things that, once those are up, that can't ever be undone. You can't put out suburban housing development and then in 40 years take it down. Fortunately, that is something that we can do, and that we've shown that we are committed to do with our decommissioning bond. Those are just a few of the points I wanted to bring to your attention. Again, we appreciate the time to talk tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Kira, is it Hague or Hanky?
Hi, my name is Kira Hague. I am a PhD student at East Carolina University in the Integrated Coastal Sciences Program, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the solar farm. My colleagues and I are working on issues like this, looking at what is the impact of these solar farms also from like biological perspectives, and we can see that there is actually an increase of property value, especially agricultural land in the vicinity of solar farms. Why is that? It's because their solar farms are kind of keeping the place clean of everything else, like there's no other use except for the solar panels being installed. There's no other interference with nature. So if you design and maintain those spaces properly, a lot of native plants can grow and can help the local biodiversity. They also, so that's kind of having more pollinators, having more bees and flies and things living on the plants kind of underneath and in between those solar panels helps the adjacent parcels to get pollinated, to get more and better seeding for all the plants and the crops, especially in North Carolina, are predominantly used for, or the way they procreate with pollinators, with bees, with flies, with things like that. And these little critters, they live, they can live in those fields where there is a solar farm. As opposed to when there's actually active agriculture, there's a lot of interference with them with like pesticides, herbicides, tilling, et cetera, which like minimizes those pollinators. So from a biological perspective and from an economic perspective, also with thinking about these adjacent parcels of agriculture, voting for the solar farm would be a good idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the last speaker signed up is Cindy Elmore.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Elmore. I'm a resident of Greenville. So I very much support the proposed solar farm for environmental reasons. I also do understand the feelings of the families who live near the current farm. It doesn't feel good when people who don't live where you do weigh in on decisions about a farm next to your neighborhood. But change could well be coming for them regardless of what happens today. I don't know anything about the owners of this land, but I do know that the average age of a farmer in North Carolina is 58 years old. So as much as we might not want this to happen, many in the next generation don't want to take over these farms, which leaves the farming landowners in a dilemma. These landowners want to preserve the land for something that will help us to use less fossil fuels. But if the solar farm is turned down, then these families have the right to ask for something else that isn't farming to be put there. Maybe a housing development, maybe a new industry, maybe a Walmart. And this is not an idle idea. The American Farmland Trust estimates that North Carolina will lose almost 1.2 million acres of farmland by 2040. We're a popular state for people to move to, which is why the anticipated loss of farmland in North Carolina is the second highest in the country. As for Pitt County, we're projected to lose 21,000 acres by 2040. We can't make people continue to farm. So change is probably coming anyway, and a solar farm is a much better option than what could be going there in the not-so-distant future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore.
That's all we have signed up to speak.
Okay. We will move on to awards and presentations. We have the recognition of the 2023 Governor's Volunteer Service Award recipients for Pitt, so I will turn that over to Janice and Alice.
Yes, and if you'll come down front with me, Alice will make the presentations, and we can assist in passing out the awards.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Manager, and members of the board. We're excited to be here with you tonight to bring some good news. Each year, counties across the state of North Carolina have an opportunity to work with the governor's office in recognizing outstanding volunteers in each county in North Carolina. I'd like to recognize a committee that works on this with me every year. Those committee members are Jennifer Congleton, ECU Health Medical Center, Jennifer Lanier-Coward, Community Schools and Recreation Department, and Dwayne Cooper from our Pitt County United Way. Also, I would like to thank the people that made the nominations. You know, sometimes we get really busy, and it takes a little extra time to make that nomination. So just quickly, if you nominated one of these recipients tonight, would you please just wave your hand? A special thank you to those folks that took time to do that. We're honored to have our chair and our county manager, along with board members, to make these presentations. As your name is called, please come forward and receive your certificate. The first certificate goes to Ed Chambers. Ed Chambers is a patient escort volunteer at ECU Health Medical Center, where he has worked for over 23 years. During that time, he has garnered over 5,000 hours of service and has been recognized as Volunteer of the Year for the hospital. Ed enjoys training new volunteers and making patients feel comfortable. The Bernard Metzl quote describes Ed, "There is no better exercise for your heart than reaching down to lift someone up." Thank you, Ed. Our second recipient tonight is the Greenville Montessori School, and would the representative? No representative. Okay, I'm just going to tell you quickly, they created the Caring in Action Program, which is an initiative where the school provides their students with an opportunity to experience the joy of volunteering. A couple of things they did in 2022, they were involved in a number of projects, including potting 220 plants for seniors receiving meals on wheels, making 60 blankets for children at the Maynard Children's Hospital, sorting and bagging 12,000 pounds of sweet potatoes for the Food Bank of Central North Carolina, and making over 500 greeting cards for Meals on Wheels. So those young people are getting a great experience through this school. Our next recipient is Christopher Godley, and if Chris would come forward. Chris Godley is the CEO of the Chris Godley State Farm Party with a Purpose. This is a high-energy fundraising party that raises funds for different nonprofit organizations. In 2022, the benefactors were the Ronald McDonald House of Eastern North Carolina and Horizons at the Oakwood School. Each organization received $20,000 for their work. A special recognition that night was also given to the healthcare providers, educators, and law enforcement. Chris has a unique ability to bring every demographic of our community together for a common cause that is making a real difference in our community. Thank you, Chris. Our next recipient tonight is Mary Beth Hembie. Mary Beth has been a volunteer volleyball coach for Pitt County Community Schools and Recreation for 10 years. Coaching requires many hours in practice time, communicating with parents and players, and coaching for the games. Over the years, she has witnessed firsthand how playing sports helps young people develop self-confidence, discipline, sportsmanship, and teamwork. These skills will play a key role for these youth throughout their lives. Thank you so much, Mary Beth. Our next recipient is Karen Simmons. Karen has been president of the Tar River Community Band for over seven years. In that role, she presides over the executive board, plans rehearsal space, concerts, and special activities. She also coordinates the mailing list for the band, handles ologistical communications and orders shirts. The band could not be successful without this tremendous gift of leadership and time. Karen is a true champion for the Tar River Community Band. Thank you, Karen. Our next recipient is Dr. Melanie Satori-Baldwin. The Mutt Strutters program was established as a partnership between the Pitt County Animal Services and Dr. Melanie Satori-Baldwin, Associate Professor of Kinesiology at East Carolina University, as a four-credit service learning opportunity. It allows dogs in the shelter to get out of their runs and socialize with people, the environment, and other dogs. These opportunities make the dogs far more prepared for adoption and finding their forever home. This program has grown far beyond students to the community, which more volunteers involved each year. Thank you so much, Dr. Baldwin. We have two ladies to recognize at this point, Guada Magangu Uma and Chantel McLogan. If they would come forward. These two young ladies are a part of the NC Schweitzer Fellowship Program. They have led the effort to help train over 25 college volunteers to serve as doulas in the Labor and Delivery Department at the ECU Medical Center. Coordinating this endeavor between Women's Center at ECU Health, the Brody School of Medicine at ECU, and the Volunteer Service Department, they were able to get facilitators from UNC to do two weekend-long training sessions for the volunteers. Many studies have shown that doulas can improve the health and well-being of women and their babies across eastern North Carolina. Guada Malugu and Chantel are able to lead this program while also maintaining a busy medical school schedule. Let's give these ladies a big hand. Our next recipient is Barbara Whitehead with a lifetime achievement. However, she is not able to be with us tonight, but most of you know Barbara. She is a dedicated volunteer in our community, has worked with NC PACs for patriots, support our troops, give to the troops, hearts with hands in the Grifton Mission Ministries. We congratulate Barbara, and we'll make sure she gets her certificate, and thank her for letting our troops across the world know that we appreciate what they do every single Our final recipient for tonight is recognition for a paid director of volunteer services. This volunteer recognition goes to Charles E. Tucker Jr., lovingly known to us as Chad. This was a total surprise for Chad, by the way. Chad is Director of Volunteer Services Department at ECU Health Medical Center. In that role, he oversees the recruitment, training, and quality assurance for all volunteers in the medical center. He is responsible for onboarding and constantly assessing the organization's need for volunteer placements. He is also currently the vice president of the NC Hospital Volunteer Professionals, and soon will move into the presidency of that statewide organization. In addition to his work at the hospital, Chad volunteers extensively with his fraternity, Alpha Phi Alpha, serving as district director over the past four years. Chad makes a tremendous difference in Pitt County in eastern North Carolina. Thank you, Chad. Now, if we could have you kind of squeeze in a little bit, we'd like to get a picture of...
Two rows, okay? If the, we'll get the tall folks in the back, and if you'll go up front, that would be terrific. And if you'll head up front. Will that work? Little bit more. Yeah.
I'm gonna get right here, because I hope I can sit right between you two.
Does that work? Final round of applause for the group. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you again to Ms. Alice and the committee, and all of our recipient winners tonight on the awards. We'll move on. Just give it just a second, we'll let it clear out. Okay, we're going to move on to presentations. We have a presentation of the county audit of financial statements for the year ending June 30, 2023, and that will be Tanya and Sam.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Order Commissioners, Madam Manager. I am pleased to introduce Tanya Thompson, Audit Manager, with the accounting firm of Martin, Starnes &amp; Associates, to present the county's audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2023. After Ms. Thompson's presentation, she and I will be happy to answer any questions you have. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening. As Sam said, my name is Tanya Thompson. I'm a senior audit manager with the auditing firm Martin, Starnes &amp; Associates. This is my third year serving as the auditor for Pitt County, and I want to thank you for having me tonight so I can go over the results of your fiscal year '23 audit. So the... So the, the highlights, the big picture, you hire us to provide an opinion on whether your financial statements for the year are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. And we issued an unmodified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion that your financial statements are reported in accordance with the standards that they are required to be reported under. Now, we actually issue three opinions with our audit. Our audit consists of the financial statements, the federal awards that we audit, and the state awards that we audit. All three of those opinions were clean, unmodified opinions. I do want to thank Sam and Kelly very much, everyone in the Finance Department, not just the Finance Department, but we also work with lots of other departments throughout the county, such as Tax, DSS, Health Department, for their partnership in allowing us to complete the audit. It, it really is a partnership. Both sides have to do their part for it to come together. We put a high demand on the staff of the county to provide us with lots of records and lots of questions to be asked and, and things to inspect. And so that process relies heavily on the cooperation of staff in order for us to complete that audit and get it issued on time. So thank you very much. So I know that fund balance is one of the most important things that we can use to measure the health of a local government. And I want to talk a little bit about the county's fund balance. So the total fund balance, this is of the general fund, is eighty-five million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand. Now, another way to look at fund balance, not just that total number, but the available fund balance, which is a statutory calculation of how much of that fund balance you can carry over and spend immediately and appropriate in the following fiscal year. And that number is seventy-four million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Now, when you compare that to last year, that is an increase in your available fund balance of a little over sixteen million. That is a twenty-eight percent increase. There are some factors that go into that calculation, as you can see, but the biggest change is just an overall increase in your total fund balance. So this slide represents a three-year comparison of your fund balance that's available compared to your net expenditures, and then the percentage of those. That percentage is also a very important measure of the fiscal health of the local government. So 2023, you can see your fund balance available at the seventy-four million. Your net expenditures in the general fund were a little less than a hundred and seventy-three million, making that percentage forty-two point nine percent. That means you had, you could cover forty-two point nine percent of a year's expenditures with the fund balance that you have available at June thirtieth, 2023. When you compare that to twenty-two and twenty-one, you'll see last year was thirty-two point three percent, and then twenty-one was thirty-three point two percent. So to put that into some, some perspective, the bare minimum that the LGC recommends is sixteen percent. And your peer group of other counties with more than ten million dollars in annual expenditures is thirty-two percent. So now I want to talk to you a little bit more about the revenues and expenses, the ins and outs of your general fund. This graph, you can see a trend of the last three years, with the red being your revenues and the green being your expenditures. You'll notice an eight-point-two-million-dollar increase in your revenues. That's about five percent from last year. And then a corresponding increase in your expenditures of five-point-six million, or four percent. So if we dig into those revenues a little bit more, this graph shows you your top three sources of revenue, with ad valorem taxes being the top at sixty percent, followed by other taxes and licenses. That's mostly your state and local sales tax. And then restricted intergovernmental at fourteen percent. And those are grants, pretty much, that you get from state and federal governments. Now, that represents ninety-one percent of all your revenues are those three sources. And then the other category of eight percent, that's made up of unrestricted funds, investment earnings, permits and fees, sales and services, everything else. So we look just at your ad valorem taxes. You can see the three-year trend here. There was no change in your tax rate from twenty-two to twenty-three, and you saw a five-point-one-million-dollar, or five percent growth in your ad valorem tax revenue collections. Your other taxes and licenses, a three-year comparison here shows that your, this is mostly local option sales tax, although there are some other sources of taxes in there. Increased about one million, or three percent. And that's been a continuing trend since COVID. We saw a large spike in your local option sales tax, and that has continued to go up. The restricted intergovernmental category, you'll notice took, increased last year, went back down this year, and that's, that's due to some one-time funding from ARPA. Most of that is energy programs that were available last year that were not continued to help people out in the crisis, to get through the continuing effects of the pandemic, to pay their heating bills and water bills and things like that. Those programs are still in place, but there were additional funds added last year. So your major expenditure categories. Your top three expenditures make up eighty-six percent of all of your expenditures, and those are your education, what you pay to the county school systems, public safety, and human services. That other category of expenditures include culture and recreation, environmental protection, things like that. If we look at education, your three-year trend there, you'll notice a three-point-two-million-dollar, or six percent increase. That is an increase in the county's budgeted operating allocation for Pitt County schools. In public safety, you'll notice a four-point-five-million-dollar increase, which is eleven percent. Most of that is due to increases in salaries and wages and benefits. And also, a portion of that is also due to the cost of inmate care and the medical expenses that the county incurs taking care of inmates in the county. In the human services category, you'll notice that same increase from twenty-one to twenty-two and then decrease from twenty-two to twenty-three. And that's also related to those energy programs. Those are federal funds that are kind of in and out to the county, mostly the energy programs. That was it for the general fund. So a quick look at your enterprise fund, your solid waste fund. You can see the current assets and current liabilities results in a quick ratio of a little over three. That means you could pay those liabilities three times over with the current assets that you have on hand. The LGC uses the quick ratio and looks to see that it's at least one, so you at least have enough assets to pay your liabilities. Another measure of the health of an enterprise fund is cash flows. So your cash flows from operations were one-point-eight million in twenty-three compared to one-point-two million in twenty-two. And then an important measure is to see how much of your cash flows can, do you have available to spend after you pay for your debt service? And that is cash flows less, less debt service of one-point-six-six-eight million in twenty-three compared to one-million-fifty-nine-thousand in twenty-two. So performance indicators, there were no audit findings, no material weaknesses over financial reporting during the fiscal year. However, you'll notice in your footnotes there is a statutory violation related to budgetary expenditures. This is required to be reported to you as part of my audit, and you are required to submit a written response within sixty days to the LGC. So this occurred in two places. There was a DSS trust and then the Register of Deeds. Now, there is an explanation for both of those. The DSS trust accounting changed a couple of years ago. It didn't used to have to be budgeted and now is budgeted. So the accounting for it isn't always in sync with the budget process. And there are corrections can be made to that process, though, to make sure that those, those do not go over budget in the future. Now, the Register of Deeds went over budget as a result of the implementation of a new accounting standard, ASB ninety-six, Sabida's subscription-based IT arrangements that required the acquisition of software at the full va, present value of the commitment over the life of the, the subscription to be recorded as capital outlay. And that process, while it wasn't a dispersment that required, you know, a check to be written, still had to be recorded as capital outlay, and it caused the Register of Deeds to go over budget. And that's why neither of those were resulted in an audit finding, however, still reportable per LGC rules. You did have a lot of positive performance indicators. Your, we talked about your fund balance available percentage in line with your peers and well above the minimum required by the LGC. Yours audit was submitted last week, and that is considered timely. And you have a very stable property tax valuation and collection percentage. That is the end of my presentation. My contact information is on this last slide. I'm happy to take any questions right now or in the future, if you have any.
Any questions? Do we hear a motion to accept this report?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Call those in favor, if you would cast your vote. Okay, thank you unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Sam. Okay, we will move on to public hearings. We have one, the Economic Development Incentive. Um, I'll ask Kelly to come up.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and County Commissioners. Tonight, I bring you a recommendation to provide an incentive to a prospective industry that would bring Pitt County approximately three-hundred-and-seven-million dollars in real and personal property investment in two phases, as well as nine-hundred-and-eight jobs with an average salary of approximately fifty-three thousand dollars. As we are competing with multiple states for this project, including Georgia and Arizona, we ask the board to consider an economic development grant equal to seventy percent of the net increase in ad valorem taxes paid by the industry for both phases of this project for a seven-year period with a cap of eight million dollars. We ask, also ask for authorization to provide the required five percent local match for an NC Commerce Building Reuse Grant. This grant will total five-hundred thousand dollars, and our match would be twenty-five thousand dollars. The county's incentive would be contingent upon a fully executed incentive agreement that outlines the guidelines for the industry to receive the county's performance-based grant, which would be paid each year for the grant period, provided that the company is in full compliance. We respectfully ask for your approval of the county incentive package as presented and with corresponding resolution to proceed with the NC Commerce Grant and match, as well as authorization for the county manager to sign and execute supporting grant agreements for both the state and county incentives.
Okay, we will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, there is no one signed up to speak.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Would cast your vote? Motion approved unanimously. All right, before we move on to items for report, I just want to recognize we have Representative Corstine Brown in the house tonight. Throw your hand up. Thank you for being here. Okay, managers report, Janice.
Yes, I have a few items for you. Your next board meeting is December eighteenth, six P.M. in this room. Just of note, today through December fifteenth is the filing period for 2024 elections. Commissioner seats A, B, and C will run in 2024. Tomorrow morning, December fifth, is the Soil and Water Breakfast, to which the full board is invited. Friday, December eighth, at two P.M. at seventy-one twenty-nine Lee Street in Ayden will be an unveiling of the smart site sign for the Ayden Railroad site. And then for those wishing to attend, local commencement exercises, a reminder that Pitt Community College will have their commencement exercises on December fourteenth and East Carolina University on December fifteenth. Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have.
Okay, we'll move on to items for consent. Everybody's had an opportunity to review those.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve items for consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would cast your vote? Okay, approved unanimously. We'll move on to items for decision. And number one on our list is the Grifton Solar. Janice, will we turn it over to you or County Attorney?
Um, to, to Mr. Gibson.
Okay.
Sure. Um, Mr. Chair, board, uh, as you're aware, this matter is coming back before the board to actually, as an action item. The board will need to vote whether to approve, to actually approve or deny petition by Grifton Solar Farm. In addition, we will need to adopt a consistency, consistency statement and also a statement analyzing the reasonableness. And just for the board, if I could read the statute governing this, just for transparency for the public. It states, "When adopting or rejecting any zoning text or map amendment, the governing board shall approve a brief statement describing whether the action is consistent or inconsistent with the adopted comprehensive land use plan." Additionally, in subsection B, it says, "When adopting or rejecting any petition for a zoning map amendment, a statement analyzing the reasonableness of the proposed zoning shall be approved." And so I believe today, as the abstract states, we need a motion, whether approving or denying. And then we additionally need a motion to adopt a consistency statement as whether, as well as a statement analyzing the reasonableness of the proposed zoning.
Okay, permission unanimously.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question for our County Attorney. Procedurally, was the vote that we took last week, is that essentially nullified for, for failure to? Or do we need a motion to reconsider?
So it would not be a motion to reconsider. Your rules of procedure say that a motion to reconsider needs to be done at the setting at the board meeting that occurs. This would just be a renewal motion or a motion to renew, and essentially could be a motion to approve or a motion to deny. But depending on what occurs, if that motion fails, that does not count as an action item. We would need a vote in the affirmative, whether to approve or deny.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Coulson?
I would like to know why staff allowed this to happen. We have experienced staff here that at the last meeting, they should have, in my opinion, brought these things to the consideration of the board at that time. And why was that not done? There's at least three people in this room that have exceptional knowledge, and I think should have weighed in at that time and not bring it, have to bring this thing back before us. I find it very interesting that so many people came forward to speak in favor of the solar program. And yet, if you remember at the very beginning, one of the people said that the people that spoke against it, that some of them did not live near Grifton. They were three miles away. And somehow, we're not supposed to consider them. And yet, tonight, we had a whole room full of people come before us, many of which don't even live in the county. And somehow, that's okay. Also, if you read the, the agreement last month or two weeks ago in its entirety, I'll just pull out a consistency statement. It was vague. It did not have any specifics in it. It just said that there was an agreement between them and the landowners at time of decommissioning. I think the landowners, if this goes forward, are going to find out at the time of decommissioning they're going to be in for a real big economic negative surprise. I've heard so many people talk about how the solar farms don't hurt the ground. I've been following this since the nineteen eighties. And I'm here to tell you, it's not true. Mercury, lead, cadmium, other elements are actually getting into the soil because of solar farms. On top of that is the decommissioning. I'll, I'll take you back to the solar farm up in Bethel. If those of you that were present, if you remember, is, I spoke about decommissioning at that time. And I believe because of what I said, decommissioning has come up as at least a statement of some sort when solar farms come before us. At that time, they said that they were going to be able to decommission the, the property. I believe, if memory serves me right, at like fifty dollars an acre or maybe five-hundred dollars an acre. There's no way they could possibly do that. On top of that, there's only three places in the United States that actually recycle or do anything to recycle the, the solar panels. Now, solar farms are only good for about twenty years, maximum thirty years. They lose about one percent of their, their output per year. They lose about 1% of their, their output per year. So by the time they get decommissioned and, and stuff, it, where, where does all this stuff go? A lot of it ends up in landfills. Because of some of the problems with the contaminants, what they put together with, the difficulty of taking the panels apart, labor intensity, et cetera, et cetera, they're finding that it's not, it's not economically feasible to use that as an economic offset during decommissioning. The fact that they, they only gave a vague statement tells me that, well, it just makes me wonder, why would they do that? Why wouldn't they give us the specifics? Why wouldn't they estimate what it's going to cost? And who's going to have to pay for it? I mean, I could go on and on, and the rest of you can, you can either dig into it and find out that a lot of the stuff that's been presented is fluff. It's not actually true. And I, I mean, I personally am annoyed, going back to the fact that we have to have a consistency statement and a statement of reasonableness now, two weeks later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coulson. Commissioner Floyd Huggins, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, why not just vote on the second and the third action rather than voting? And I guess this would be a question for the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, you know, we didn't do what, we didn't complete the action last time. So why not complete that action but not go back to the full vote again?
Yes, ma'am. And Commissioner Huggins, even though there was a vote in the negative for the approval, there was no action item that had actually occurred. We did not, the board did not deny the petition. So there would need to be a motion to deny the petition or a motion to approve the petition.
Even though it was, it was, it failed?
Correctly. The motion to approve failed, but it, it was not rejected by the board. The petition itself was not rejected by the board.
Satisfy you, Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
That's an answer.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a three-pronged motion that we approve the request by DeGrifton Solar LLC to rezone the, the noted acreage, and that we, as a board, adopt a statement that, that in light of the Pitt County Planning Board's unanimous decision, that it is consistent with the, with the comprehensive land use plan, that it is in fact consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and also adopt a statement that the proposed rezoning is reasonable under the circumstances.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion, any further discussion?
Is that motion that you said, Commissioner Nunnely, Nunnamore, the no vote prior to, are you saying that we are starting over?
It's my understanding, if, if I'm not mistaken...
That we start over, that we're starting this whole process?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is what we've been advised by the county attorney to do.
So if we, this motion goes, if we don't want the solar farm, is this yes or no?
Straight up yes and, yes or no?
Yes, ma'am. This would revert back. So essentially, we are voting, I believe the motion on the table is a motion to approve the petition. Additionally, a motion to approve that the land use, or the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and is reasonable and in the public interest. So that is for, in the affirmative for the solar farm.
So we have to vote yes to, and they can put the solar farm in? That's what you're saying? Okay, I just want to make sure I understand.
Or you can vote no.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes. And what Commissioner Nunnely did was put all three motions into one. So if you vote for it, you're, okay, I got it.
Before we cast our votes, Janice, do you want to make any comments for what Mr. Commissioner Coulson had to say in the beginning in regards to the last meeting?
If the board would like me to. So I regret that we are here again for the second time. In the meeting itself, your chair inquired as to the county attorney as to the next step following the denial of the motion to approve. The county attorney answered that question, and the board followed that. And that's what I have to say. So I hear your question as to why did someone else not jump up and say something different, and it was in deference to the chair and the attorney at the time?
If I could just speak to that, there are many times when, on other subjects, staff will jump in and offer explanations or point out insufficiencies, and it wasn't done this last time. And I'm very annoyed over it. That's, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Any, any further comments or questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Okay, let's cast our vote. Okay, motion carried. Six, three. Okay, moving on, we have the 2024 board meeting calendar and 2425 budget calendar.
Mr. Chairman, there is a proposed budget calendar in your packet on page 154 for consideration by the board.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Commissioner Perkins-Williams? Think yours has not.
I was, check, I'm sorry. I was lost in the last motion. I'm sorry.
We're, we're waiting on your vote.
Yes, and I'm trying to catch up.
And that's for, this was for the meeting calendar and the budget calendar.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's what I was trying to find out.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, motion carried unanimously. Next up is the appointment, reappointment to the Pitt County Board of Adjustment. Janice?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board appoint Molly Holdeman to a south-of-the-river voting seat, and then appoint another person as an alternate member. Then to additionally reappoint Rita Jackson Gilbert, the north-of-the-river representative, Sharon Gray, north-of-the-river representative to the Pitt County Board of Adjustment, with those terms expiring January 1, 2027. So you have three recommendations for appointment and reappointment, and you'll have to come up with one new name from those contained within your packet to serve as the alternate member.
Okay, it's a pleasure to board.
Like to nominate those.
Motion to approve.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. All right, cast your vote.
And if those would be for the three that have been named, you can complete that, and then you'll go back to fill your alternate member seat.
These are the three that are named. Got a couple of folks still need to cast their vote.
I'm sorry. I pressed it.
They're a little, little slow tonight. Okay? That carried unanimously.
And then for that same Board of Adjustment, you'll need to make an appointment to the alternate seat. All of the applicants in your packet meet the eligibility requirements for that seat, choosing between Jackie Hinton, Rebecca Houston, Thomas Lowry, Richard Pitt, and Robert Scheck.
I would like to nominate Jackie Hinton.
Then we have a motion for Jackie Hinton. Right here, second.
I second it.
Then we have a motion and a second. We've got two that need to cast their vote, Commissioner Coulson, Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
I'm about to punch them things tonight.
Things in, in slow motion tonight.
Did, but they're just not...
Commissioner Coulson? All right, carried unanimously. Thank you. Appointment and re, next up is appointment and reappointment to Pitt County Child Fatality Prevention Team.
It's being recommended that the board appoint Mr. Gentry Pinner as the law enforcement representative, reappoint Mr. James Jim MacArthur from emergency services, Ms. Sue Ann Pilgreen at large, and Ms. Marlo Blake at large to the Pitt County Child Fatality Prevention Team.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your vote.
I pressed it.
One more time. Very good. Thank you. All right, that's passed along. Okay, I think we have made it through our agenda. We are at our commissioner comments. I'll start with Commissioner Coulson. My left.
Yeah.
No comment.
Maybe before Christmas.
Commissioner Coulson?
I said none.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
No comment.
No comment, no comment. Commissioner McGlawn?
No comment.
No comment.
Boy, this is moving on along.
No comment.
Oh, sorry. Nobody's got any comments. Okay, I will entertain a motion to close this session out.
If the attorney can, if the attorney can suggest the statutory basis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It has been suggested that this body go into closed session under the following grounds. One, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3, which privileges hereby acknowledged. Two, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A4. Three, to prevent disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31810. And four, to establish or instruct staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real estate under 143, 31811A5.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yeah.
Your, your clicker hadn't clicked in again.
Oh, gosh.
All right. Okay, welcome back. We are back in open session.
Chairman Smith, I would like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from November 20th and September 11th of this year.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Carried unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to offer the motion that we go home.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, cast your vote. I don't think anybody's going to turn that down.